Ready, you got it started?
Yes.
Okay. Called meeting order for the Franklin Special School District on Monday, February 8th. As always, let's, before we do the pledge of allegiance, let's do a moment of silence and then we'll have Drew put up the flag for the pledge of allegiance. So bow for a moment of silence if you will, please. Thank you. Drew? All right, I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
Of the United States
Of America.
Of America. And to the Republic Which it stands, One Nation Under God Indivisible With Liberty and Justice for All. Thank you. Alright, so move right into recognitions and good news awards. First thing is a proclamation for National Board Certified Teacher. I will read that and I believe we have a video following that, is that correct? Dr. Snow?
That is correct.
Okay. Alright. Kiara Cright, National Board Certified Teacher. Whereas education is the process by which one generation passes on to the next generation knowledge and passion for learning. And whereas the success of this process is our insurance that future generations will achieve lofty goals and fulfill dreams. And whereas teachers open children's mind to the magic of knowledge and dreams. And whereas the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards has helped to reshape the public's perception of teaching, leading to a better appreciation of the demands on and requirements for accomplished teachers. And whereas National Board Certified Teachers are creating more professional and educationally rewarding relationships among their colleagues, students, parents, administrators, and community. And whereas National Board Certified Teachers have a mission to maintain high and rigorous standards for their profession and for their students. And whereas Franklin Special School District recognizes that the addition of National Board Certified Teachers to its classrooms enhances the mission to provide world-class educational experiences for all children. Therefore, we serving as members of the Executive Committee of the Franklin Specials, Franklin Special School District Board of Education do hereby proclaim that Kiara Cright be commended for her contributions to the field of education and the lives of her students for obtaining the elite title of National Board Certified Teacher and for continuing to exhibit the very best in teaching and learning presented the 8th day of February 2021. Dr. David Snowden, Director of Schools, Robert Blair Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Cright. And, Dr. Snowden, video?
Yeah. Drew?
Good evening, we are pleased to hold this celebration of honoring our newest National Board Certified Teacher with the National Board Certification Penning Ceremony. At this time, I would like to introduce Mrs. Tasha Ba, the Johnson Elementary Principal.
Good evening.
Evening, our National Board Certified Teacher will be pinned by a Franklin Special Teacher who previously earned the distinguished title of National Board Certified Teacher.
Hi, I'm Patrick Born, and congratulations, Mrs. Cright.
Thank you so much, Patrick.
Mrs. Kiara Cright, Johnson Elementary Music Teacher, was pinned this evening by Patrick Born, a Franklin Elementary Music Teacher who is National Board Certified in music. Congratulations, Mrs. Cright, and thank you so much, everyone.
Congratulations and thank you. As always, we wish we could be there in front of an audience, but this will do as a celebratory gesture for now. So, thank you. At this time, we'll continue with good news awards, asking Ms. Alicia Barker if she would read the proclamation for recognizing pupil transportation personnel. And then Ms. Alina Bale will give us our good news award. For our student artists.
Okay, so I'm going to read the proclamation for Pupil Transportation Appreciation Day. Whereas safe, reliable, comfortable, and efficient pupil transportation and school bus service is an essential component of the Franklin Special School District's vision of excellence in teaching and learning for all. And whereas the dedicated members of the FSSD Transportation Team provide daily service to approximately 2,200 students, as well as service to hundreds more through field trips, special events, after-school programs, athletics. And whereas data shows that public schools' pupil transportation service is by far the safest means for children to get to school and home again, and that each school bus can relieve the traffic burden of the equivalent of 40 passenger cars. And whereas without public school buses, many Franklin children would not have access to safe and reliable public transportation to school. And whereas school bus drivers, bus aides, and support staff of the FSSD Transportation Department display a consistent commitment to safety, efficiency, professionalism, and the health and well-being of our students. And whereas even in the face of a global pandemic, these devoted employees have shown exceptional spirit in continuing to carry out their duties. Now, therefore, we, the Franklin Special School District Board of Education, Franklin, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim February 23rd, 2021, Pupil Transportation Appreciation Day, and encourage everyone to join in acknowledging the contributions and services of our school bus drivers, aides, and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Appreciate that and certainly appreciate those who are in our transportation and giving them an appreciation day. Ask if Ms. Bale would do our birthdays for the month, birthday card.
Board, our Franklin Special School District Artist of the Month is Sienna Buckner. Freedom Middle School's 8th grader, Sianna, sorry, Buckner, is the Franklin Special School District Student Artist of the Month for February. Sianna completed her beautiful sunset landscape in art teacher Nicole Good's class during a study in plein air art impressionism and atmospheric expression. Students explored style, color, and mixed media as they created a self-expressive landscape. Art standards such as foreground, middle ground, background, horizon line, size, scale, clarity, and value were discussed as students sought to answer the question of, if you could go anywhere in the world and spend time outdoors, where would you go? Sianna's beautiful representation of a South Carolina beach is a place that anyone would love to spend time. Her artwork was spread, will spread lots of cheer to Franklin Special School District employees who receive a birthday card during the month of February. A special thank you to Sonic Drive-In for sponsoring the Student Artist of the Month program with a generous $15 gift card.
Thank you, Ms. Bale, and thank you to Student Artist of the Month. And if you have a birthday in February, you should receive one. Always appreciate that and certainly appreciate Sonic. Moving on, let's do reports, presentations, and discussions. We'll start with Dr. Decker with Teaching and Learning Report, and then ask Dr. Esslinger to do the construction report.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. I am going to share my screen in just a moment so that I can speak to tonight's Teaching and Learning Spotlight, which is on the Franklin Special Strategic Plan. And I will provide a progress report of the work toward the strategic plan thus far. Is everyone able to see the progress report? Okay, wonderful. This month, the Teaching and Learning Spotlight illuminates the Franklin Special Strategic Plan, also known as REACH 2024, and the progress toward its realization that has been made thus far. The strategic plan, which spans 2019 through 2024, focuses on four priority goals: literacy, student well-being, equity in facilities, and college and career readiness. The FSSD strategic plan was developed following an extensive input gathering process during which feedback was garnered from all stakeholders, including students, parents, community members, administrators, faculty, and staff. Additionally, the results of the 2018 Advanced Ed Accreditation Process, and Advanced Ed is now known as CAGNYA, factored substantially into the creation of the strategic plan. You'll find here a graphic detailing the key accomplishments to date related to the strategies outlined for each of the four strategic plan goals. And I know you've had a chance to read through this, but I'll just walk through it briefly and go over the goals quickly. By 2024, FSSD will achieve a 75% proficiency level on the state achievement measure, which is TAN-Ready, and a Level 5 on the state growth measure, known as T-BUS. So the strategies centered around core literacy and content area instruction, professional learning offerings, effective interventions in monitoring literacy goal process. And as you can see, the key accomplishments among them are the high-quality English Language Arts Adoption, which is being implemented this school year. And as you're also aware, in Franklin Special, ongoing professional learning is very important to us and to all of our teachers and administrators and paraprofessionals. So all of those educators had introductory professional learning on this new adoption throughout the summer and on the opening day in August, and it continues throughout this year and indefinitely. We're continuing the lunch and learn process as well, and that drives targeted differentiated professional learning. And we're emphasizing literacy in relation to the strategic plan goal. And then, of course, we have our district assessments, including STAR, iReady, ELA, and Ames Web. And those are universal screeners that help support the alignment of our literacy interventions. And we constantly look at those interventions and ensure that students that need extra support are receiving it in a timely fashion. And as you're also well aware, after our March 2020 extended closure, we know that this is more important than ever. Student well-being. This goal centers around increased support for students' mental, emotional, and behavioral health. And of course, the strategies were the Therapy Dog Program, the expansion of Mercy Clinic, expanding the implementation of Positive Behavior Supports, also known as RTI2B. That's our work with Vanderbilt University. Of course, social and emotional learning, professional learning, has been a focus of ours for several years. And then student advocacy, that is a strategy that really rose to the top after that Advanced Ed accreditation that I mentioned a little bit earlier. So I'm happy to report that Therapy Dog Maddie has settled right in at Johnson Elementary and has been providing support to students and educators and staff on a daily basis. And she's being transitioned now to work once a week at the Freedom Intermediate Media Center and has been very well received there, as you can imagine. There is a Mercy Clinic Counselor that provides support in every school, not every day, but the schools are all covered at one point in time or another by a Mercy Clinic Counselor. We are including community partners and district-level RTI2B collaborations. We've been very intentional about offering professional learning related to trauma, resilience, and student well-being. And there's a philosophy of student advocacy that's being embraced when it comes to making sure that we're looking at student support on a holistic level. Trauma-informed practices, we have found are key. And this is something that we knew was coming to the forefront again, probably two to three years ago. But in light of the recent events related to the COVID-19 pandemic, this has taken on increased importance as well. Equity in facilities, this goal states that by 2024, all campuses will have equitable and appropriate spaces and systems in place so that we can carry out the mission, vision, and goals of Franklin Special. And there's quite a list of strategies here. I won't read every single one of those, but I'll just hit some of the highlights when it comes to key accomplishments. As you know, the new Poplar Grove Elementary gym and the Franklin Special Performing Arts Center are in progress. Central office complex plans are in discussion. Again, I won't read every single one of these bullets because we have quite a few here. I'll give you just a moment to peruse those. The final one, investigating options for the maintenance and transportation facility. You know that one of those is potentially purchasing the existing property and building at Eddie Lane. And then finally, there's the goal of college and career readiness. By 2024, students will be able to match their strengths and interests to prepare them for college and career. We also have a student advocacy strategy here. It's very important for the second strategy that we expose our students to higher education. And then what goes right along with that is career exploration and the transition to high school. So the philosophy of student advocacy that I described a little earlier applies in this goal as well. And I think that you're well aware of the February 2020, right before COVID arrived, 8th grade Columbia State Community College visit that was very successful. We just recently had a virtual career quest that was in partnership with Williamson County Schools. And I think a very standout accomplishment related to this goal is the Computer Science Foundation's High School Credit Course that has been offered this year at Freedom Middle School. One other accomplishment that I wanted to mention that Dr. Farmer shared with me, last year Franklin High School invited Freedom Middle students to attend their College Career and Technical Education Day. And Freedom Middle School's FHS Zone students went to the FHS campus to preview the college and technical education program. Any questions?
I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Will the Therapy Dog go eventually to the other elementary schools? Like, will they share her or will she be limited to just Johnson?
As it looks right now, we're finding that Maddie really does best when she is with a regular group of people and she knows exactly what the expectations and routines are. So my thinking is, at this point, that we may down the road have to look potentially at other therapy dogs and really allow Maddie to focus on one or two schools. But it's early to say definitively yet.
Okay.
That's a great question. And in fact, on our principal meeting agenda in a couple of weeks, we have on the agenda an inquiry about what principals may be interested in having a therapy dog. And so we hope to be able to continue to explore those possibilities and have additional therapy dogs in the district. I think Maddie has proven her value to lots of students and as well as adults. So I think it's time, we kind of put it on the back burner, so to speak. When COVID hit, we had started having some conversations about the expansion of that program. But after talking with Ashley McCoy, who is one of the handlers, she and JP Orman. In fact, we exchanged emails today. And I think it's time to discuss and possibly look at how we can expand that program.
Can you give us, I don't want to take too much time, but can you give us like a one or two-minute blurb on like how a child would interact with Maddie and kind of what we see as what the benefit has been for that child?
Do you actually want to take that or I'll go ahead if you?
Maybe we can both. Okay, I'll start, thanks, sir. Maddie will sometimes listen to students read a book. She'll provide comfort. You know, if she can notice, it's whether the student or a staff member. If perhaps they're having a difficult day, she'll sense it and she'll walk up to that person and offer comfort. And there are times when she is brought into a classroom and is sort of off to the side and will have the chance to interact with small groups of students.
Okay. Thanks.
And then also another thing, she really does have a calming effect. We have many students who do have emotional issues or issues related to different things. But, including behavioral issues, behavior issues. And it's been shown, and she's shown, that she can have a tremendous impact and a calming effect on those students as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Decker.
Thank you, sir.
More questions, we'll go to Mr. Dr. Esslinger.
Hi, good evening, everyone. As you know, we have several construction projects in the works and I've provided a construction update, a report for you guys to review. If you've driven by the pack recently, you will have noticed that my report is a little behind schedule already. The steel went up at the end of last week. So they're a little ahead on the steel. I don't know if you have been able to drive by and see how big this thing we're building is going to be. It's quite impressive. The steel is going up and a little bit more today. But I'll open up for questions. If you have any questions regarding any of our projects, I'd be glad to entertain them at this time.
Alright, no questions for Dr. Esslinger? Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the approval of the board agenda. We make a note that as we go through the rest of the agenda where we're doing a motion and a second, we'll also be individually answering by saying yes or no. So I will call each board member's name and you can respond with a yes or no after we get a motion and a second. So approval of the board agenda, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second?
A second.
Okay. So now we'll just go down. Mr. Blair, yes? Mr. Stillings?
Yes.
Mr. Townsall?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Bale?
Yes.
Alright, we have approval of the board agenda. Approval of the consent agenda, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Newman, second?
A second.
Alright. No discussion, we'll do vote again, Ms. Bale?
Yes.
Ms. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Townsall?
Yes.
Mr. Stillings?
Yes.
Mr. Blair, yes. Thank you. Business before the board. I think the first item is teachers recommended for tenure. I'll ask Dr. Snowden if he will handle that for us.
Yes, we're excited to recommend 25 teachers for tenure this evening. With COVID, we've had to adapt and adjust and be creative. And so we have a video of our principals. Instead of being able to introduce those teachers live to us, they did a video. And I have to say, they did a great job. So after the video, then we'll make a recommendation. So Drew?
Dear Dr. Snowden and members of the Franklin Special School District School Board, it is my honor to recommend Jennifer Alvarado for the status of tenure in the Franklin Special School District. Mrs. Alvarado is an exceptional art teacher with a gift for inspiring creativity and confidence in her students. Walking down the halls of Franklin Elementary, you see the amazing artwork created by our students under Mrs. Alvarado's guidance. The artwork brightens our building and helps to create a positive school culture at Franklin Elementary School. Mrs. Alvarado graduated from the University of Central Florida. She taught visual arts at Chestnut Elementary for science and engineering for five years in Kissimmee. She's taught visual arts at Franklin Elementary since 2015. Mrs. Alvarado was named the Franklin Elementary 2018-2019 Teacher of the Year. While in Florida, she was the winner of the Gaylord Palms Rookie Arts Teacher of the Year in 2012. She was nominated for the Teacher of the Year in 2014 and nominated for the Arts Teacher of the Year in 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2014. She's accomplished a great deal and touched many lives in her 11 years of teaching. At Franklin Elementary, she's initiated Fine Arts Night, worked with our students and an artist in residence to create a 20-foot-long community weaving project, initiated a school-wide DOT Day. She served two years as the representative on the Franklin Public Arts Commission for the Franklin Special School District. She's established a legacy project for our 4th graders and she's presented many professional development activities, including a fabulous folk art session at the National Art Conference in New York. As the parent of two of her former students shared, she is by far the most inspiring art teacher I've ever met. Her planning and execution is second to none, culminating in the brilliant pieces of art my girls bring home from school. So much so, we have devoted a wall in our house to display this exceptional work. Honestly, I can't believe the quality of art that she creates in her classroom with all of her students. Her loving, caring, kind nature lights the hallways and she is loved and adored by teachers and parents alike. Mrs. Alvarado is an exemplary, truly gifted art teacher and it is my pleasure to recommend her for tenure status in the Franklin Special School District. Dear Dr. Snowden and Franklin Special School District Board Members, I'm writing this letter to give my recommendation for Julianne Bergman to be granted tenure status in the Franklin Special School District. Ms. Bergman has taught 4th grade for the last five years at Franklin Elementary. Prior to coming to Franklin Special School District, she taught 7th grade for three years at Glenn L. Downs Elementary in Phoenix, Arizona. Ms. Bergman earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education from Northern Illinois University and she recently received her Master's of Education degree from the University of Texas. She has led district professional development classes on academic feedback and participated with a group to share lessons learned from the Ron Clark Academy. Ms. Bergman has led professional learning at Franklin Elementary on topics such as vertical planning and academic feedback. Ms. Bergman sets high expectations for all of her students and she works to develop strong relationships with each of the children that she teaches. Her classroom exudes a positive atmosphere with encouraging quotes posted throughout the classroom. At times, she's transformed her room to foster student engagement into Fraction Candyland, Measurement Around the World, and for geometry, a Spider-Man theme with yarn hung all around the room for students to classify angles, rays, and lines. As one of her former parents wrote, "Julianne taught not only the content standards, but deep conceptual mathematical understandings in hands-on and fun ways for my child." "She provided meaningful activities and worked diligently to provide materials and activities to meet the needs of every child." Ms. Bergman is highly deserving of tenure status and I recommend her for this honor without reservation. Dear Dr. Snowden and members of the Franklin Special School District School Board, it is my honor to recommend Erin Dowling for tenure in the Franklin Special School District. She is a truly great kindergarten teacher who is beloved by her students and their parents. Ms. Dowling is a 2009 graduate of Winona State University in Wisconsin with a Bachelor of Science degree in teaching. Interestingly, Ms. Dowling did her student teaching in Trace Rios, Costa Rica. She began her teaching career in Waukesha, Wisconsin, where she taught first grade in a kindergarten, first grade, multi-age classroom. While teaching in Wisconsin, she served as a district mentor literacy teacher. Ms. Dowling has taught kindergarten at Franklin Elementary for the past five and a half years. While at Franklin Elementary, she competed in two triathlete competitions. In two thousand and nineteen, she received her national board certification. She's highly respected by the Franklin Elementary faculty and was named the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty Franklin Elementary Teacher of the Year. She was also named the Franklin Special School District Elementary Teacher of the Year. She served the Franklin Special School District as a mentor teacher for the Early Learning Model in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. And from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty, she served as a representative for her team on the Franklin Elementary Shared Leadership Team and a secretary for the SLT. She's represented the kindergarten team on the Sunshine Committee and the Technology Committee. As one family shared, we could not have imagined or wished for a better teacher to introduce our child to this school year. Thank you for your joy and the enthusiasm that you bring to learning. Thank you for your patience and gentleness and thank you for genuinely loving our kid. You've made this introductory year to education amazing and this is a most remarkable gift. Ms. Dowling is an extremely dedicated and gifted educator and it is my privilege to recommend Erin Dowling for tenure in the Franklin Special School District. Dear Dr. Snowden and Franklin Special School District Board Members, it is my pleasure to recommend Courtney Gennaro to receive tenure status in the Franklin Special School District. Mrs. Gennaro graduated from the University of San Diego, where she was a member of the Lightweight Rowing Team, which placed in the top ten in the nation. Mrs. Gennaro majored in elementary education while an undergraduate. She received her master's degree with emphasis on reading and curriculum from Grand Canyon University in Phoenix. She began her teaching career in Arizona and this is her eighteenth year of teaching. Mrs. Gennaro has a wide variety of teaching experiences. During her teaching career, she has taught third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. She currently teaches third grade at Franklin Elementary. Mrs. Gennaro has been the third grade team leader for the past two years. She has also served on the Shared Leadership Team, the Programs Committee, and the Renaissance Committee at Franklin Elementary. She has brought many new ideas to Franklin Elementary, including TCAP Boot Camp and the Third Grade Spring Production On the Radio. The TCAP Boot Camp has played a vital role in preparing our third grade students for state testing. The production of On the Radio is enjoyed very much by our entire school community. Mrs. Gennaro is deserving of tenure status in the Franklin Special School District and I recommend that she be granted this honor.
Dr. Snowden and FSSD Board Members, it is with great honor that I recommend Hannah Bush Pesta tenure status in the Franklin Special School District. Mrs. Pesta has completed her fifth year of teaching at Johnson Elementary. When she began teaching at Johnson, she taught fourth grade and now she is teaching second grade. Before coming to Johnson, she completed a second grade interim position at Franklin Elementary. Hannah is a native of Michigan and received her bachelor's degree in elementary education with a major in language arts and a minor in teaching English to speakers of other languages from Michigan State University. Currently, she is enrolled at Arkansas State University to earn her Master of Science in Education in School Counseling. She is due to graduate in December. Mrs. Pesta contributes to the culture and climate of Johnson. She tutors after-school through Gentry's Educational Foundation. COVID nineteen did not stop her passion for helping students after school. She is continuing to tutor virtually after-school to increase student achievement for her students. She is always willing to volunteer for school events, a positive role model, and a mentor for all children of, children of all ages. One quality of Mrs. Pesta that cannot go unrecognized is the fact that she puts the children in her classroom first. She takes time to get to know each individual inside and out. I cannot wait to see what the future brings for Mrs. Pesta. Mrs. Pesta is a wonderful exam, example of an exemplary teacher and meets all the requirements to be granted tenure. Dr. Snowden and FSSD Board Members, it is with the most sincere and utmost pleasure that I recommend Cara Cright to receive tenure status in the Franklin Special School District. Mrs. Cright is a gifted music educator. Her classroom is inspiring, engaging, and student-centered. She delivers instruction in a variety of creative ways through technology, movement, and hands-on activities. She instills a love of learning and music appreciation for all students at Johnson. Before coming to the FSSD, she taught general and vocal music in Metro Nashville Public Schools. During her time in Metro Nashville Public Schools, she was named Teacher of the Year at Cambridge Elementary and Metro Nashville Public Schools Blue Ribbon Teacher. Mrs. Cright is a native of Tennessee, grew up in the Bay Area of California. She earned her Bachelor's of Arts degree from Spelman College and her Master of Science degree in Music Education from Tennessee State University. Just recently, she earned her national board certification and participated in the Level Up Festival, which is a fundraiser for the music industry workers at the Ryman, singing back up to the world premiere song, Twelve Million. Mrs. Cright is not only an extraordinary music teacher, she is a valued member of the Franklin Special School District's Professional Learning Community for Music Educators and our Johnson Elementary School staff. Mrs. Cright works closely with her special area team at Johnson and has collaborated on many programs together, such as our Fine Arts Extravaganza and JES Talent Show. She introduced the students, parents, and faculty of Johnson to Dancing on the Rooftop, which has become the number-one Christmas song to sing every year at Johnson. She has inspired and motivated many students during her time at Johnson to pursue their interest in music. She has recommended and encouraged students to try out for musicals, choirs, and learning to play instru- instruments. Mrs. Cright comes early and stays late most days so she can teach drama and piano to students through Gentry's Educational Foundation. Last year, she started a choir called the Tiger Troubadours. The true Tiger Troubadours went to NHC for caroling and did a Veterans Day and Black History program. Mrs. Cright is highly knowledgeable, passionate, innovative, unique, and driven to en- ensure success for all students. She is a model music educator and is most deserving of tenure status in Franklin Special School District. Dr. Snowden and FSSD Board Members, it is my honor to write this recommendation from Kim Dartie to receive tenure status in Franklin Special School District. Mrs. Dartie is currently the Reading Specialist at Johnson Elementary. Mrs. Dartie has taught pre-kindergarten, first grade, second grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grades, and community college. She was also an early literacy education consultant with the Tennessee State Department of Education. Mrs. Dartie earned tenure from FSSD in nineteen ninety-four and tenure from Williamson County in two thousand and nine. She was awarded Teacher of the Year for Fairview Elementary in two thousand and thirteen. Mrs. Dartie is a native of Tennessee. She earned her Bachelor of Science for Elementary Education, her Master's of Ed- of Education degree for Curriculum and Instruction, Early Childhood, and Reading Specialist Endorsement from Middle Tennessee State University. Mrs. Dartie is very passionate about reading instruction. She is very knowledgeable and has a deep understanding of teaching students to read. She works very closely with all classroom teachers, administration, the math coach, and Dr. Looney. She supports teachers' reading instruction by researching and providing reading resources to assist teachers in improving their craft of teaching reading. She mentors and models exemplary, exemplary English Language Arts lessons. She is very involved in our benchmark testing. She analyzes and monitors student data and meets with small groups of students to increase their reading skills. She co-leads our Academic Behavior Support Team and our School Data Team meetings. We are very fortunate to have Mrs. Dartie as a reading specialist at Johnson Elementary. She meets all the requirements to be granted tenure in Franklin Special School District. Dr. Snowden and FSSD Board Members, it is my pleasure to recommend Alice Irvin to be granted tenure status in the Franklin Special School District. Mrs. Irvin has completed her fifth year as a second-grade teacher at Johnson Elementary. She has also taught first grade in Williamson County, preschool in Virginia, kindergarten third grade in Georgia, and has been an adjunct faculty member for East Tennessee State University. She was also awarded Phoebe Hurst Outstanding Educator of the Year in two thousand and three in Georgia. Alice has proven herself to be efficient, knowledgeable, and dedicated to the teaching profession. Alice is a native of Tennessee and received her Bachelor's of Art History degree at the University of Georgia and her Master's of Education degree in Early Childhood at George Peabody College, Vanderbilt University. It is a privilege to watch Mrs. Irvin connect with the students in her class to build a loving, successful learning environment. She instills a love for learning in her students through hands-on activities, utilizing technology, and creating engaging lessons. Her classroom is very inviting, where all children feel safe and are able to learn. This year, Mrs. Irvin is a second-grade virtual teacher. However, this has not stopped her from connecting with her students and setting high expectations for them. Teaching in the virtual setting has prompted Mrs. Irvin to be even more creative in her lessons, activities, which I know will transfer to her future in-person students. Mrs. Irvin is a wonderful example of an exemplary teacher and meets all the requirements to be granted tenure. Dr. Snowden and FSSD Board Members, it is my honor to write this recommendation for Kelly Jones to receive tenure status in Franklin Special School District. Mrs. Jones has completed her fifth year as a speech-language pathologist in FSSD. She has served students in grades fifth through eight at Freedom Intermediate and Freedom Middle Schools. She is currently serving pre-kindergarten through fourth-grade students at Johnson. Mrs. Joan is a native of Nashville, Tennessee. She received her Bachelor of Science degree in Communication Disorders from Middle Tennessee State University and her Master of Science in Communication Disorders from Western Kentucky University. Mrs. Jones' passion for helping kids learn how to communicate came from the years that she spent watching her brother, who has Down Syndrome, attend therapy. She saw the impact that his speech pathologist had on his ability to communicate and she knew from a young age she had, she wanted to do the same for others. Mrs. Joan helped start a best buddies chapter at Freedom Intermediate School during the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year and was a faculty advisor for the chapter from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty. She also started the best buddies at Freedom Middle School during the two thousand and nineteen, twenty school year and was the faculty advisor. She volunteers as the director of Stone Soup, Friends of All Abilities outside of school. This organization provides a way for families with children or young adults who have disabilities or different abilities to fully participate in and contribute to our community. Mrs. Jones is very efficient and knowledgeable of her services, of the services she provides for students. She sets high expectations for all of them. We are very fortunate to have Mrs. Jones as our speech-language pathologist at Johnson Elementary. She meets all the requirements to be granted tenure. Dr. Snowden and FSSD Board Members, it is my honor to write this recommendation for Lindsay Lowry to receive tenure status in the Franklin Special School District. Mrs. Lowry is a first-grade teacher at Johnson. She began her teaching in Metro Nashville Public Schools, teaching kindergarten and second grades. She has also taught sixth-grade English Language Arts in White County Schools. Mrs. Lowry is a native of Sparta, Tennessee. She earned her Bachelor of Science degree in interdisciplinary studies, K eight, from Lipscomb University. She earned her Master's degree in Library Science and her Education Specialist degree in Early Childhood from Tennessee Tech. Mrs. Lowry continues to prove herself as a dedicated and passionate teacher on a daily basis. She has a deep passion for teaching and creating engaging lessons for her students. She enjoys incorporating American Sign Language in her daily instruction to teach vocabulary to her students. She also believes learning not only takes place inside the classroom, but outside of the classroom as well. Every summer, she teaches swim lessons to children of all ages. Mrs. Lowry has a special love for her students and she understands the importance of building a relationship with her students. She makes it a priority to know everything about her students, their interests, and academic levels. She also sets high expectations for her students and expects their best at all times. Mrs. Lowry is an essential member of Johnson Elementary and Franklin Special School District. She works collaboratively with her colleagues to find the best practices in teaching and is always willing to contribute her knowledge to the team. Mrs. Lowry is a lifelong learner and she is an asset to our school and our district. She meets all the requirements to be granted tenure. Dr. Snowden and FSSD Board Members, it is my pleasure to recommend Katie Milliken to receive tenure status in the Franklin Special School District. Mrs. Milliken has completed her fifth year of teaching at Johnson Elementary. She has taught second, third, and is currently a first-grade teacher. She came to Franklin Special School District with eight years of experience as a kindergarten teacher in Rutherford County and has continued to prove herself as a dedicated and passionate teacher. Mrs. Milliken is a native of Louis- Louisiana, but moved to Franklin when she was in the second grade. She is an alumnus of Franklin Special School District. She attended Franklin Elementary, Johnson Elementary, and Freedom Middle School and graduated from Franklin High in two thousand. She earned her Bachelor's degree in Elementary Education from Louisiana State University and her Master's of Education degree for reading and reading specialist endorsement from Middle Tennessee State University. Mrs. Milliken has a deep passion for teaching her students and understands the unique needs of each individual student. Her classroom is child-centered and she develops her lessons to promote the love of learning in all of her students. She works collaboratively with her colleagues to find the best practices in teaching and is always willing to contribute her knowledge to the team. When dealing with the many challenges of teaching, she is always positive. Mrs. Milliken is an essential member of Johnson Elementary and Franklin Special School District. She is always willing to help in any way she can and makes every effort to volunteer her time and services to all Johnson's functions. Mrs. Milliken is a lifelong learner and she is an asset to our school and our district. She meets all the requirements to be granted tenure.
There we go. Dear FSSD Board of Education, this letter is to offer my complete support of Drew Aaron as a candidate for tenure. I've had the privilege of working with Mr. Aaron since August of two thousand and nineteen. In this short amount of time, I have come to know him as a strong facilitator of instruction who works tirelessly to empower his students. He sets high and demanding academic and behavioral expectations for every child he serves. His passion for teaching and learning is evident through the engaging lessons he plans and the relationships he develops with his students. One of Mr. Aaron's many strengths is his consistent and purposeful use of trauma-informed practices in his classroom. He has created a safe space for children to learn and grow. Mr. Aaron's natural ability to lead is put to use through his service as co-leader of our school's PBIS team. He facilitates school-wide trainings and supports teachers as they grow in their understanding of positive behavior support. Through his work ethic and dedication to his students and the Liberty community, it is clear to me that Mr. Aaron is a caring, passionate, and skilled educator who embodies the FSSD mission. He is committed to excellence in teaching and learning for all. So, congratulations to you.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Have a great day.
Thanks, teacher.
Dear FSSD Board of Education, this letter is to offer my support of Ms. Mary Clay Estes as a candidate for tenure. I've had the privilege of working with Ms. Estes since August of two thousand and nineteen. During this time, Ms. Estes has demonstrated a fierce passion for teaching and learning. She is skilled in creating a classroom environment where students feel safe, supported, and successful. She establishes powerful relationships with her families by communicating often to keep them informed of their child's progress and offering support when needed. Student data to improve instruction is exceptional. She seeks ways to strengthen her teaching so her students will grow and achieve at high levels. This year, Ms. Estes has done a wonderful job teaching kindergarten in the virtual setting. Her students are making gains in all subject areas while staying connected to the Liberty Elementary School family. Through her work ethic and dedication to her students, it is clear to me that Ms. Estes is a caring and passionate educator who embodies the FSSD mission. She is committed to excellence in teaching and learning for all. Please feel free to contact me with any further questions. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Dear FSSD Board of Education, this letter is to offer my complete support of Katie Giles as a candidate for tenure. I have had the honor of working with Ms. Giles since August of two thousand and nineteen. In this short amount of time, I have come to know her In this short amount of time, I have come to know her as an exceptional educator who cares deeply for her students. She sets high and demanding academic expectations for her students while cultivating a nurturing and supportive learning environment in her classroom. She encourages students to reach their full potential by providing them with differentiated support that is based on need. Data is her friend, and she uses it to make calculated and informed decisions with regard to teaching and learning. She actively seeks and is responsive to feedback and is consistently looking for ways to improve her craft. Ms. Giles cultivates positive relationships with her families through clear and frequent communication and positive phone calls home. Ms. Giles serves as our building-level instructional technology leader and is the first-grade team leader. She plans and leads productive weekly PLC meetings and facilitates school-wide technology training, supporting teachers as they grow in their understanding of instructional technology. Through her work ethic and dedication to her students, it is clear to me that Ms. Giles is a caring, passionate, and skilled educator who embodies the FSSD mission. She is committed to excellence in teaching and learning for all.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Good evening, Dr. Snowden and FSSD Board members. This is Janet Carroll, principal of Moore Elementary, and it is my honor to write this recommendation for Kayla Eaton to receive tenure status in the Franklin Special School District. Kayla began her teaching career in Lee County Schools in North Carolina, where she taught second grade for one year. After moving to Tennessee, she began working at Moore as a pre-K peer professional. She did an exceptional job, so we hired her as a kindergarten teacher. She taught kindergarten for one year and then moved to first grade, where she has taught for the last five years. Kayla is a dynamic teacher who is dedicated to helping her students thrive and grow. She is very knowledgeable and skilled with technology and is passionate about making learning engaging and hands-on. She has certainly excelled as a virtual teacher this year. As one of her current parents has stated, Kayla has taken a group of students who missed their final months of kindergarten and created a rich learning environment in their homes. Kayla has served Moore Elementary well. She has been a team leader, a member of our advisory council and reading committee, an after-school tutor, and is a Google-certified educator. In the district, she has served on the social studies textbook adoption committee and calendar committee. Moore Elementary is so happy that Kayla has joined our team. She has proven to be an asset to our school and our district. Kayla Eaton meets all of the requirements to be granted tenure. Good evening, Dr. Snowden and FSSD Board members. This is Janet Carroll, principal of Moore Elementary, and it is my honor to write this recommendation for Katie Leach to receive tenure status in the Franklin Special School District. Katie has a total of 27 years of teaching experience. She began her teaching career as a pre-K Montessori teacher at the University School of Jackson in 1991. She moved on to be a pre-K and kindergarten teacher in 1999 at Hull-Jackson Montessori Magnet School in Nashville. Katie then served as a pre-K teacher at McDowell Elementary in Murray County from 2004 to 2015. Katie joined the Moore family in 2015 and has taught pre-K here for the past six years. Katie has achieved over 60 hours of graduate work in early childhood education. She has been trained through the North Carolina Center for Montessori Education and the Montessori Center International in London. Katie had the honor of being Teacher of the Year at McDowell Elementary in Murray County in 2008 and 2013. In addition, she was the Murray County Education Association's Distinguished Teacher of the Year in 2011. She also served as a lead mentor at McDowell Elementary from 2010 to 2013. In FSSD, Katie has served both on the Tennessee Department of Education Student Growth Revision Committee in 2018 and the Tennessee Department of Education Feedback Committee for the Student Growth Portfolios in 2019. Katie is a natural pre-K teacher. She implements sound instructional strategies that are successful with preschool students. She has an engaging teaching style and creates a sense of community and belonging in her room. She has a passion for pre-K children and teaching and conveys a love of learning. She is truly dedicated to preschool education. Katie has proven to be an asset to our school and our district. Katie Leach meets all of the requirements to be granted tenure. Good evening, Dr. Snowden and FSSD Board members. This is Janet Carroll, principal of Moore Elementary, and it is my honor to write this recommendation for David Reynolds to receive tenure status in the Franklin Special School District. David began his teaching career at Trinity Elementary, where he taught art for three years. He joined the FSSD family at Moore Elementary in 2015 and has been teaching art here for the last six years. David has served Moore Elementary, FSSD, and the community in a variety of ways. He has chaired Moore's Professional Fund Committee for the last four years. He has also been a member of our Diversity Committee and played an integral part in planning our annual Festival of Nations. He started Moore's Fine Arts Night that occurs each April. This is a night where parents are invited to view and purchase framed pieces of student artwork. During his time at Moore, Mr. Reynolds has designed our student yearbook. In addition, David has served as an alternate on the District Advisory Committee and contributed and led many FSSD art teacher professional development sessions. He has also had the opportunity to present to art teachers in over 10 states in regards to technology in virtual and in-person art classrooms. David has spent the last three years as a facilitator at the Tennessee Arts Academy and has been a member of the Tennessee Art Education Association Committee for art competitions. Most recently, Mr. Reynolds was asked to be the FSSD representative for the City of Franklin Public Arts Commission. It is a true joy having David at Moore. His creativity, dedication, and enthusiastic personality shines through in everything he does, and the students adore him. He has an engaging teaching style and loves the kids as much as the content he teaches. David is passionate about his profession, is an advocate for the arts, and is committed to educating the whole child. He wants his students to explore their hidden talents while gaining an appreciation of art and the role it plays in the world around them. David is a valued member of the Moore family. He has proven to be an asset to our school, district, and community. David Reynolds meets all of the requirements to be granted tenure.
Greetings, FSSD Board of Education. What an honor it is to recommend Ms. Whitney Chambers Woods as a candidate for tenure in the FSSD. Whitney helped open Poplar Grove School in 2000 as the school counselor for the middle school students. After leaving for a short stint, she returned to PGS for another short run before taking more time away to be with her family. When Whitney returned to Poplar Grove Elementary in 2015, she dug right in, taking the counselor's role by storm. Whitney is one of the most dynamic people and educators you will ever meet. She is the ultimate child advocate and has more grit and determination than her physical stature may reveal. Whitney has a remarkable gift of bringing people together and forging connections with students and families. She is not content to sit back and wait to hear about a need or a problem someone has, but she prefers to go out and find them. The span of Whitney's reach is wide as she works to help families, students, colleagues, and the community as a whole. Families know she is a resource for them for anything they should need. May it be financial, a listening ear, support with employment, food, furniture, legal connections, and the list goes on. It appears there is not a need Whitney cannot meet, and she does it expeditiously. Colleagues value her insight and know they can count on her to help in all situations while maintaining a positive approach and the ultimate confidentiality. Whitney consistently proves herself to be a dynamic counselor, thoughtful colleague, and humble leader. She is committed to educating the whole child, and she brings great value to our school, district, and community at large. It is with great confidence that I recommend Mrs. Whitney Chambers Woods as a candidate for tenure in the FSSD.
Greetings, FSSD Board of Education. What an honor it is to recommend Dr. Cinnamon Collins as a candidate for tenure. I've had the pleasure of working with Cinnamon just over five years now, observing her both as an ELL teacher and faculty leader. She is an outstanding supporter of students' continual language acquisition, and her commitment to student success in the classroom is evident in her practices. Dr. Collins challenges students to think in different ways and is driven to help her students develop a love for literature. She regularly posts the current book she is reading on her door for students to see as they enter the room, and she constantly engages in conversations about books with them. The expectations she has for her students are unwaveringly high, and the culture she has built in her classroom fosters a strong learning community where students are willing to be vulnerable in the learning process. As students are supported by her, they are continuously supportive of each other, and they feel safe attempting new challenges without fear of being ridiculed. Due to Dr. Collins' commitment to continual improvement, she received her doctoral degree from Lipscomb University in 2017, all while still teaching. Her professionalism is evident as she looks for ways to support her colleagues while maintaining a steadfast advocacy for ELL students. She is reflective of her instructional practices and is a tremendous asset to our school and district. In short, it is clear to me that Dr. Cinnamon Collins is and will continue to be a devoted educator. Her commitment to excellence, reflective nature, and work ethic are sure to be assets to the students of our school and the entire FSSD, as well as all professionals who interact with her in the years to come. It is with great privilege and honor that I recommend Dr. Cinnamon Collins as a candidate for tenure in our district.
Good evening, Dr. Snowden and members of the Franklin Special School District School Board. It is my pleasure to be with you this evening, virtual though it may be, and it is even more my pleasure to give recommendations to two teachers for tenure in the Franklin Special School District. The first teacher that I would like to recommend for tenure is Mrs. Erin Lane. After graduating with a Bachelor of Arts in English and Writing from the University of New Hampshire, Mrs. Lane worked for a nonprofit that focused on supporting writing programs in elementary and middle schools in the Boston public school system. During her time there, she worked directly with students, many of whom were English language learners. She modeled lessons for teachers and aided in curriculum development. This experience led her to pursue a master's degree in education with a focus in language arts. Upon completion of her education masters from Simmons University, Mrs. Lane taught middle school English Language Arts for six years in the Chicago Public School System, which is where she worked with an EL teacher who served students with 36 different native languages. Seeing these children's passion to share their culture and their desire to learn a new language drew Mrs. Lane to pursue her ELL endorsement. After moving to Tennessee, Mrs. Lane spent two years teaching in Williamson County before obtaining her ELL endorsement and being hired at Freedom Intermediate School, where her knowledge, experience, and heart have proved to be invaluable in the service of our students. In her role at Freedom Intermediate School, Mrs. Lane has worked with students in a variety of core classroom settings where she supports the content teacher with instruction and her EL students in using the language they're acquiring to master grade-level concepts. She also provides explicit small-group instruction to newcomers that is rooted in creative and experiential activities designed to help students cement words and concepts in ways that foster rapid recall while also centering these lessons around multiple state standards. Students also benefit from interventions that focus solely on language acquisition and are designed to accelerate their ability to not only communicate, but also learn and participate in academic discussions. Beyond Mrs. Lane's direct work with students is her commitment to collaboration and advocacy to ensure the best possible settings, schedules, and relationships to cultivate success. Whether it's meeting in the summer to review testing results for determining placements or looking for ways the schedule can allow her to work with even more students, Mrs. Lane leaves no stone unturned in seeking opportunities to improve student outcomes. Good teaching is good teaching, no matter which students are receiving the lesson. And Mrs. Lane consistently provides great teaching to our students who are not only learning curriculum, but also the language in which it's taught. It's for that reason that I'm proud to recommend Mrs. Erin Lane for tenure. Please join me in recognizing Mrs. Lane. Now, it is my pleasure to recommend for tenure in the Franklin Special School District, Mrs. Raynal Potite. Mrs. Potite currently serves as a sixth-grade math teacher on Team Velocity. During her time at Freedom Intermediate School, she has provided rigorous instruction and scaffolded support to every student that has come to her room. Whether collaborating with a special education colleague to ensure proper levels of challenge, instituting protocols for honor students to compete in national math competitions, or diving into data with her other math teachers to look for standards that can be strengthened, Mrs. Potite always brings a results-oriented vision and a heart for student growth. After initially graduating with her Bachelor's in Science in Human Services from UT Knoxville, Mrs. Potite worked for the Knox County Department of Health, where she oversaw and taught the Tobacco Education Program. In addition to promoting and lobbying for more responsible tobacco laws, she also delivered the education program to local businesses and high schools. It was during her time working with high school students that she felt the call to return to school herself in order to complete her Master's in Education at South College. Mrs. Potite spent the next seven years teaching at Knoxville Catholic before her family chose Franklin, Tennessee as their next place to call home. Through a series of quite fortunate events, including a principal waving her down in a parking lot to invite her to interview, she finally wound up at Freedom Intermediate School. In addition to her impact in the math classroom, Mrs. Potite also serves in ways that benefit the entire school and district. Through her leadership on our social-emotional learning committee, our students benefit from SEL activities that begin each day with a positive focus on personal growth. Her work in making these activities relevant and powerful have caused them to be shared across the district as well as with other school systems as they strive to create learning environments that foster awareness of one's own feelings and the feelings of others. Mrs. Potite is a wonderful example of a teacher who is no-nonsense about content and improving outcomes, while also seeking out and celebrating opportunities to enjoy the unique beauty of each child. I consider myself fortunate to not only work with Mrs. Potite each day, but to also give her this recommendation for tenure. Please join me in recognizing Mrs. Raynal Potite. Thank you, Dr. Snowden and School Board.
It's with great excitement, it's that time of year where we get to recommend teachers for tenure. I'm excited that this year we have several teachers that are eligible. I want to start by reading Ms. Sonya Lee's letter to the board for why she is so deserving of tenure. It is with abundant inclination that I am writing to recommend Ms. Sonya Lee for tenure in the Franklin Special School District. Sonya is an experienced instructor that does an outstanding job of providing her students access to the content standards. Ms. Lee's knowledge of the Science Seven standards and curriculum is extraordinary. The wealth of experience she brings to her Science Seventeen plays an integral part in their instructional planning and implementation process. Sonya expresses her perspective and is always willing to engage her colleagues in professional discussions that encourage reflection on our instructional practices. Sonya's ability to hone in on the academic standards that best prepare students for what is to come in high school and beyond is remarkable. Ms. Lee is a steady colleague among her peers. I'm so glad to have Ms. Lee as a colleague at Freedom Middle School. Again, I recommend her for tenure in the Franklin Special School District without reservation. So, Sonya, thank you so much for all you do, and I'm so glad, as I said in the letter, that I get to work with you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Palmer. I appreciate you.
Yeah, hey, all right, thank you. All right, as I mentioned previously, we're fortunate to have a number of teachers at Freedom getting tenure this year, and so I'd also like to read a letter about Andre White and why I believe he should get tenure in Franklin Special School District. I had the good fortune of meeting Andre as part of the administrative internship process for Franklin Special Schools, and we had a position came over that he felt was challenging for his growth, and we're excited to have him here. And so I'll read the letter that I wrote to the board recommending Andre for tenure. It is with great pleasure that I'm writing to recommend Mr. Andre White for tenure in the Franklin Special School District. Andre is an exceptional educator who Andre is an exceptional educator who has an instinctive gift to build relationships with students and colleagues. Relationships are the foundation from which his classroom flows. Although this is Mr. White's first year with us, he is well-respected among students. The relationship he built with students while at Johnson Elementary had provided a seamless transition to his new role as our STEM teacher at FMS. I first met Andre, as I said a minute ago, when we completed his administrative internship together. His personality immediately impressed me. He is practical, interpersonal, and does not shy away from professional challenges. The manner in which he has transitioned from an elementary teacher to a STEM teacher has been nothing short of amazing. Andre has taken over a successful STEM program and continued to afford opportunities to our students, even though the content is new and he is teaching in unprecedented times. Mr. White is a valued employee that I'm proud to call my colleague. Again, I recommend him for tenure in the Franklin Special School District without reservation. So congratulations, Andre, and we're so excited that he's part of our team.
Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you, sir. As I mentioned previously, we have the good fortune of having a few of our colleagues at Freedom Middle who have gotten tenure this year, and so now I just want to celebrate Brooke Grider. And I want to read the letter that I wrote and submitted to the board for her tenure. It is with great pleasure that I'm writing to recommend Mrs. Brooke Grider for tenure in the Franklin Special School District. Brooke is an exceptional colleague and advocate for her students. The collaborative approach she takes with her peers and students is evident. Mrs. Grider is a skillful special education teacher. Building relationships and promoting high academic standards are integral parts of her teaching. Brooke is heavily involved in our tutoring program for students that need extensive support academically. She continues to challenge herself by taking on leadership roles within the building. She's an active member of the Freedom Middle School Building Leadership Team. Brooke has also been instrumental in the exceptional growth we have seen with our Tennessee Behavior Supports Project over the last two years. I'm so glad to have Mrs. Brooke Grider as a colleague at Freedom Middle School. Again, I recommend her for tenure in the Franklin Special School District without reservation. So thanks, Brooke. We appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm pleased to recommend Ms. Sarah Fleming for tenure in the Franklin Special School District. Sarah has a Bachelor of Science degree and Master of Education from Middle Tennessee State University. She's taught for twenty-four years in grades three through eight. She is certified in K-8 with endorsements in special education and gifted education. She has one daughter, Emily, who was a freshman at the University of Tennessee at Knoxville, and a new Golden Doodle puppy named Knox. I am well aware of her teaching abilities since I was her student teacher many years ago. Ms. Fleming has a genuine care for her students' success and possesses a unique ability to connect with all students. Ms. Fleming continually seeks to utilize best practices, and this was evident as she sought to hone her skills to better serve students with characteristics of dyslexia. Ms. Fleming serves as Poplar Grove Middle School's representative on the Franklin Special School District Special Education Professional Learning Community Committee. I strongly recommend Ms. Sarah Fleming for tenure in the Franklin Special School District due to her strong commitment to students and the teaching profession. Thank you.
All I can say is wow. What a talented group of individuals. We're so fortunate, and you know, there were a lot of them twenty-five, but they're amazing individuals, amazing professional educators. So we've provided copies of their recommendation letters from principals to you in your packet. We've also have documentation of attendance, summative evaluation, and other information in the HR department if you'd like to review that. Also, an additional background check has been conducted within the past few months on each person that was eligible for tenure. As we said earlier, twenty-five are being recommended for tenure, and we now are very proud to say or to make a recommendation to the board to grant all of these twenty-five teachers that you've met tonight, even though virtually, tenure status in the Franklin Special School District.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Snowden. You had a great class of teachers coming our way. Is there a motion on the floor tonight?
Motion to approve all the tenure teachers.
Ms. Bale, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Townsend, anyone have any other discussion or comments?
I'll say this, just very briefly, as always, very impressive, very impressive.
I'd like to say thank you to Drew for putting together that video and for all of the principals giving us their recommendations. Always good to hear all of that.
And they did it in such a creative way, and I know you'll pass back to each and every one of those teachers our sincerest thanks for their excellence.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let us vote. Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Stillings?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
And Mr. Blair is a yes as well. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Snowden and Drew. Next item of business, Mr. Townsend will take care of that.
All right. As you know, upon receiving the State of Tennessee Report Card for the recently concluded school year, our Director of Schools prepares and presents us with a State of the System Report, and he gets that to us, and that serves as his self-evaluation, specifically addressing all the progress that the system has, that the district has made in each of the areas of performance measurement. And then with that, each board member gets a scorecard, so we can score him in those four areas. And then what we do is we have those sent in to the central office, to the accounting firm of Esslinger and Reardon, no, to Dr. David Esslinger and Carol Reardon. They compile the scores, and when I say compile them, the process has been toss off the highest score, toss off the lowest score. If anyone fails to score on a particular objective, that's tossed out, and then the remaining scores are average per category, per objective. And then the average score, the average total from each objective category is then added together for a total composite score. So very quickly, under improvement of student performance, the highest possible score is a thirty-five. Dr. Snowden received a thirty-four. Number, the second one was effective management of district resources. Highest possible score is a twenty-five. You got a twenty-four point seven five, and we round up, so that's a twenty-five. On execute on the board's vision, highest score you can get to twenty, you receive the twenty. On the fourth category, provide the highest level of internal and external communications, highest score is a twenty, you receive the twenty. Add all those up, carry the one, his score is a ninety-nine. Ninety-nine out of one hundred. With a score of a ninety-nine out of one hundred, he is eligible to receive one hundred percent of his bonus pool, which is equivalent to ten percent of his current annual salary. So that's the composite score. That's where we are. And instead of me throwing it to you to see if I can get to win and make a motion, I would love to make a motion that we approve the composite score and award a performance bonus based on that score. That's my motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
I get a motion by Mr. Townsend in two seconds. Let Carol, Carol free that one out. Any discussion, any comments?
I'll say this, and I think at least wants to come after me, is that, once again, it's clear by these scores, these are some phenomenal scores, that Dr. Snowden has knocked the ball out of the park. The school district's doing quite well. Just want to say we're very proud again to say that, so fortunate that the school district is running so well. And I think the scores reflect that we all feel the same way on the school board. So again, ninety-nine out of one hundred is phenomenal.
I do want to echo Kevin's sentiments, but also thank you, Dr. Snowden, for your leadership through this very strange time, unprecedented time, and thank you for making it a priority to keep our kids in school and give families options, though at the same time, for those who aren't comfortable with that. I think you and your staff have just really done a phenomenal job in working with what you've got in constantly changing circumstances. I appreciate your leadership.
I'll jump in. Sorry. Can I? Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Dr. Snowden, we have one, outside of fiduciary responsibilities, we have one major job, and that is to care for our superintendent, and you have reminded us once again in such a difficult year why sage leadership is so important in the life of a family. And we feel like Franklin Special is a family, and you have cared for our greatest asset, which is our kids, and we're grateful, very grateful.
Robert, I wanted to, I wanted to say something, if I can. I just want to appreciate, tell Dr. Snowden and anyone who would, might listen to this later, that I really appreciate the report that we get that we base these scores on. A lot of people don't know what we actually look at. It's so thorough, so detailed, amazingly detailed of what you've done and the staff have done and the administrators have done to reach the goals except for you, which is our job to evaluate you. And so I appreciate the fact that we get really good information, and I know not everybody sees that report, but it's extremely lengthy, extremely thorough, and I appreciate that because it makes it easy to rate the categories and see how we've done. So thank you for providing that for us.
All right. Well, it's very evident. We're blessed to have Dr. Snowden and very appreciative to all that he does. So we could go on and on and on, but we will vote now and then we'll ask Dr. Snowden if he has any comments. So we've had a motion and a second, so Mr. Blair is a yes. Mr. Stillings?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Bale?
Yes.
All right, it's unanimous. Dr. Snowden, any comments before we move on?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. As always, I'm humbled and honored by this evaluation. As I say frequently and every year in the evaluation, these scores are representative of the employees of this district. I just get the good fortune of reaping the benefits of the hard work that they do. You know, they're phenomenal. They've been, they've been as phenomenal this year as any year, just because of the pandemic. But yeah, you know, these scores are, as I said, are reflective of their work. Also, I'd like to take this opportunity to, and I'm appreciative of the bonus and that, but as in the past, I would like to choose to donate that bonus back to the school district, and I respectfully request that the board allow me to utilize those funds within the school district or, and we've had several opportunities to use them for, and I'll just give you an example of what the bonus was used. Last year's bonus was used during the summer, and this year, early fall, was to add some additional water filling stations because we didn't have very many in the district. And Dr. Esslinger and I spoke and I asked him to go and do some research and to offer that as a way to expend those funds. So again, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, as always. Yep, we have several policies on the table tonight, so.
I'm sorry, Robert. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can I do one quick thing?
No, you may. Go ahead, go ahead.
One, that's phenomenal what Dr. Snowden just did, but just a little bit of housekeeping is that prior to the upcoming school year, we want to go ahead and make sure that this performance review process is what we want it to be going forward. So what I'd like you to do is each board member, you have the, and if you don't, we'll email you the current performance review process, and if you have any tweaks to it, please get that into me. And what would we think would be an appropriate timing and back? I think ten o'clock tonight? Too early? Okay. What's a better time, people?
Nine o'clock. We just go on into it.
Is, any suggestion? Next Monday? Is that too early, honestly?
When do you need it by?
We have some flexibility. I just would say, you tell me what, I want you to have some time to look at it, see if there's anything we need to tweak. So what do you think was a real appropriate time?
Well, next Monday is a holiday, so.
What about two weeks from today?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Just email Kevin.
Email me? Perfect. All right, two weeks from today. That's all I had, Robert. We'll, I'll follow up and we'll we'll have a discussion of what we need to tweak, and we'll have a work session and all that, and I'll just sing ready. Thanks, thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you, Ms. Townsend. Dr. Snowden?
Yes, item number three is a new policy. This is a second reading, Threat Assessment Team, three point two zero four. This is a new model policy that was provided by TSBA, who has been tailored for our district. This policy aligns with Tennessee Code Annotated forty-nine, six, twenty-seven, oh, one, which allows boards to create a threat assessment team. Our district has had this team in place as an active part of our day-to-day operations for several years now. There were no changes requested by the board for first reading. We recommend approval of second reading.
Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? All right, let's vote. Ms. Bale?
Yes.
Ms. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Stillings?
Yes.
Mr. Blair is a yes. Thank you, Dr. Snow.
Yes, item number four, policy revision, procedural due process, six point three zero two. This is also a second reading. This revision is a part of the review of Section Six. Policies, group of policies referencing the TSBA model policies. Updates highlighted differences between corrective measures of minor and severe offenses. Also removes language that is duplicated in Policy six point three one seven, student disciplinary hearing authority. References are also updated. There were no changes recommended by the board on, upon first reading. Administration recommends approval of the second reading.
Make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Bale, any discussion? Let's vote. Mr. Stillings?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Bale?
Yes.
All right. Okay, is you announced, Dr. Snowden?
Okay, number five, pause revision, admission of suspended or expelled students, six point three one eight. This is also a second reading. There were no changes. I'm sorry, updates to this policy are to clarify the last paragraph and to update the references. There were no changes requested on first reading. We recommend approval of second reading.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Townsend, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Barker, any discussion? All right, let's vote. Ms. Bale?
Yes.
Ms. Barker?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Stillings?
Yes.
Mr. Blair is a yes. Thank you.
Item number six is a policy revision, physical examinations and immunization, six point four zero two. This is also a second reading. Updates to this policy are also part of the Section Six review. Updating to current Tennessee Code Annotated Language and References. There were no changes on first reading. We recommend approval of second reading.
There a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion, Ms. Newman, second. Ms. Bale, any discussion? All right, let's vote. Mr. Stillings?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Barker? Ms. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Blair is a yes. Thank you.
Item number seven, policy revision, emergency contact information. This is also a second reading. Updates to this are part of also the Section 6 review, updating to the current Tennessee code annotated language and references. There were no changes requested by the board on first reading. We recommend approval of second reading.
All right, make a recommend, make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Ms. Newman, any discussion? All right, there's no discussion. Let's vote. Mr. Townsall?
Yes.
Mr. Stillings?
Yes.
Mr. Blair is a yes. Ms. Bale?
Yes.
Ms. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Approved. Thank you. Dr. Snow?
Item number eight, policy revision, students with disabilities, special education services, 6.500. This is also a second reading. Updates to this policy align with state law. Language has been provided by TSBA as part of their review of the board policies that are required by law. As an elementary and middle school district, placement of students in age-appropriate classrooms and settings is a procedure that is followed throughout our district. There were no changes requested by the board upon first reading. Administration recommends approval of second reading.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Mr. Stillings, any discussion? All right, let's vote. Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Blair is a yes. Mr. Stillings?
Yes.
Mr. Townsall?
Yes.
Approved. Dr. Snowden?
Item number nine, policy revision, charter school applications, 1.901. This is a first reading. Per TSBA Director of Policy and Staff Attorney, this revision updates our policy to recent legislation that changes this charter school process, which went into effect January 1st, 2021. This moves the date of application for a charter school being filed with the board back from what was previously required and adds filing the application also with the Department of Ed. If there would be an application filed, reviewed and denied by the district, any appeal with amendments must be filed with the Tennessee Charter School Commission instead of the State Board of Education, as was previously the case. To date, there have been no applications filed with the district. Excuse me, the administration recommends approval of first reading.
A motion to approve?
So moved.
Stillings, second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Townsall, any discussion? Not, let us vote. Ms. Bale?
Yes.
Ms. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Townsall?
Yes.
Mr. Stillings?
Yes.
Mr. Blair is a yes. Approved. Thank you. Dr. Snowden?
Item number 10, policy revision, interscholastic athletics, 4.301. This is also a first reading. Updates to this policy add the Williamson, excuse me, Williamson Middle Athletic Association, WMAA, to T double S double A for bylaws, as we use both associations for our athletics as well as to the references. We recommend approval of the first reading.
Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Townsall, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Newman, any discussion? Let us vote. Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Townsall?
Yes.
Mr. Stillings?
Yes.
Mr. Blair is a yes. Ms. Bale?
Yes.
All right, approved. Dr. Snowden?
Yes, item number 11 is a policy revision, medicine, 6.405. This is all, so a first reading. Updates to this policy add language regarding administration assisted and self-administration of asthma relief inhalers and anaphylaxis medication, as well as updating the references. We recommend approval of the first reading.
All right, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Bill?
A second.
Second, Ms. Barker, any discussion? Let's vote. Ms. Bale?
Yes.
Ms. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Townsall?
Yes.
Mr. Stillings?
Yes.
Mr. Blair is a yes. Approved. Thank you. Director of Schools report, Dr. Snowden?
Yes, so in your packet, we include a summary of the four bills that were passed during the special legislative session related to education. We're going to just kind of hit the highlights. I know it's been a lengthy meeting. We'll hit some highlights tonight. And then we hope to have some recommendations for the March board meeting about, maybe not all of these, but the ones that are going to require some action and tell you our thinking of what we've been discussing. First, we'll start with teacher pay. As you probably heard, there was legislation passed that would increase the teacher salary or educator salary, including nurses, certified staff, including nurses, starting in January of this year through June 30th. As you also recall, the amount of funding that we receive through the BEP does not cover the additional teachers that we have above the BEP. Also, the increase is based on the average teacher salary in Tennessee, which I'm proud to say that there's nothing average about our FSSD district and there's nothing average about our teacher salary. So with that said, we received a calculation of what the amount of money that we will receive, should receive from, in the BEP for that increase for teachers, and it's 163,000, which is obviously good. We're very appreciative of that amount. But it doesn't cover, again, as I said earlier, the teachers above that we employ above the BEP formula. In addition, this does not offer any increase for classified employees. And I'll just say unequivocally that I can't justify giving educators, certified, and our nurses an increase without looking and trying to do our very best to provide our classified employees with an increase from the January 1 through the June 30th timeframe. Currently, we're looking at different options of how to do that. We, we know based on our information from the SR 2.0 that if we can tie that one-time stipend or bonus to our classified or any, any group to COVID, which it'd be hard to not to be able to tie that into any employer, because all of our employers are having to do additional work, this fulfill additional responsibilities. So that's one option, and we'll continue to look at those options. And I said earlier, we hope to have a recommendation on how we would make that happen as far as classified and also a recommendation related to our certified. We are also, and we believe, again, not to make a recommendation, but we think the prudent thing to do would be to look at a one-time stipend or bonus for our certified teachers or certified educators, including our nurses. And also, if we're able to do the increase of salary for classified, it would, we would use the same methodology. Dr. Eslinger, I probably didn't leave much for you to add. I apologize. So, but if you have anything else to add, I certainly appreciate it.
Never apologize for covering more than than you need to, Dr. Stone. I'm always open to that. No, he covered everything. We have been in a lot of discussion around how we're going to walk this through. So as we learn more from, from our funding sources, we'll make some, some better educated decisions in the near future and, and let everybody know how we're going to do that.
Questions from anyone? Okay, the second bill I want to mention is the learning laws bill. That's pretty comprehensive. It has a lot of parts, components to it. It includes some summer programs, some summer camps, six-week summer camps for elementary students, and also a four-re, four-weeks, excuse me, bridge camp for our middle school students. At this point, the way it was, the legis, the law reads, it's, it included fifth grade as an elementary. As you know, our grade spans are, we consider fifth through eighth as middle. However, we've been told that we can receive a waiver to include our fifth graders in those summer programs with the middle school. That's, that will be our plan. Also, and then the elementary summer camp, the six-week camp, that would be for grades K through four. We did receive, there's still a lot of details lacking, in, in my opinion, regarding, we did get some funding allocation information late Friday. It's still, to me and to Dr. Decker and Dr. Eslinger, unclear on exactly how those funds are going to be allocated. And it is going to be based, as we understand it at this point, on how many students participate. And again, that participation is not mandated. That will be up to the families on whether they decide to to have their children participate. I'm going to be quiet for a few minutes. I know that's surprising to you. And I asked Dr. Decker to fill in some blanks that I left with the learning laws.
There aren't many blanks, sir, but just to give an overview of the purpose of the Learning Loss Remediation and Student Acceleration Act, due to, of course, the COVID-19 pandemic and the spring closure that started in March 2020, and then having students excluded from school throughout this year for a positive COVID test or exposure. The additional summer learning opportunities are essential, according to the state, to accelerate students' educational growth and ensure that all children have the opportunity to reach their goals and dreams. Dr. Snowden already talked through two of the camps that will be planning for the summer, the summer learning camps for K through four, the learning loss bridge camps for grades five through eight, and then there will also be an after-school summer learning mini camp that will focus on Dream, which stands for Science, Technology, Reading, Engineering, Arts, and Math. And that's an additional hour of programming that will occur at the end of the day of the K4 camp, the summer learning camp. You may be wondering.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was just going to speak to which students are eligible to participate in these camps, which will, of course, be at no cost to the students. In the case that there are more students, they're open to everyone to start with these camps, to all students. But if there are more students interested in participating than seats available, students who meet the following criteria must be prioritized. Those who've scored below proficient math or ELA on the student's most recent TCAP. In grades K through two, students who attend schools with fewer than 50% of the third through fifth grade students proficient in math or ELA on the most recent TCAP. A student who has scored below proficient in math or ELA on a state adopted benchmark assessment or screener, Tennessee universal math or reading screener, and/or is eligible for TAMF funding. And TAMF is temporary assistance for needy families.
We'll just add to that, we think a possible challenge is going to be the willingness of our, of teachers to teach. I mean, they've had one heck of a year, challenging year, and they're tired, they're stressed, and, you know. We hope that many of our teachers will step up and will be willing to teach in these camps. But I think superintendents across the state have echoed the same sentiment when we are looking at these camps and whether or not teachers are going to be willing to, to step forward and to teach in these camps and these opportunities. And we'll be sending a survey to our teachers within the next few days, hopefully. We're going to discuss surveys that have been developed by Ms. Duke and Dr. Decker to ask about their willingness. And then we'll, after we see how many teachers are willing, then we'll, they'll, we'll try to move forward with that. Questions related to the learning laws legislation?
I had a question. Would any of our programs, I had two questions. Any of our programs we already do in the summer count as any of this? And when I'm looking at it, you know, like the summer learning camp, five days a week for six weeks, are students coming for that whole six weeks? Are these one-week camps for different batches of students? Or has that been outlined? And is the state, obviously, they're not funding any of this?
Yes, that we, we do, we are going to receive some funding. I mean, make sure we got our, we receive what the calculations of what we anticipate. We just don't know how those are going to be allocated exactly. So we're still waiting, I guess, for some more details related to that. It's our understanding that it's the expectation for those children to attend all six weeks.
Wow.
The camp.
Students are tired.
It's, it's up to the parents. There will also will be an assessment, a pre-assessment, when students attend the camp. And then we'll be required to give a post-assessment after they've completed the camp. That'll also be a challenge, is how many parents were willing to send their children to those summer learning loss camps. Those, those parents who have had their children at home virtually, they may be more willing to send their children if they're, if they feel safe this summer, just to maybe have them in person teaching and learning. But that's a great question. Thank you. Other questions?
Dr. Snowden, I, I know that we, you're still working things out. I guess my, my initial concern is all the preparation that it's going to take to have this run effectively. I saw that they're going to give us a little skin in the game with the teacher, with the pay, but that's clearly not to our, our level of excellence to support all that they're asking us to do. And I, I, I know, you know, obviously, you guys are going to think this through with extreme detail, but I'm very willing to write a letter to whoever I need to, to express appreciation, but also to express concern, just to bring clarity to their attention. This, the enormous task that we have and and I also wanted to ask whenever you're ready for us to extend invitations to our legislators so that they can come and see what this is. I know, you know, they had a lot of information that they received, but clearly, they, they didn't receive all the information they needed in order to mandate something like this. And I would love for them to, to be able to see our best practices when we are able to get this taken care of.
And there's still a lot of planning, a lot of design left to do. And I'll just mention one other element of that learning loss bill that I had quite a bit of concern. I relate that concern to Senator Johnson, also Representative Whitson. So, and that is the gateway for third grade and the possible retention in two years of those third graders. And, and we just think there needs to be more information related to exactly what the definition of proficiency or definition of, of what students will be retained. And then there'll also be some options for, for parents, whether it's a read test, whether it's tutoring, whether it's a summer program. But still, we do not believe wholesale retention is the right way to go. And we've expressed that to our legislators and to the Commissioner of Education. But we'll see how that goes. We don't have to, again, that's two years out, but we don't want to wait for two years. We want to try to iron out those, that, those details as quickly as possible.
Dr. Snowden, I had a question, one more thing. Do you feel like this, these camps that they've set up, and now we've seen what they've come out with, is that pretty much set in stone? There's not going to be any wiggle room there? They're not renegotiating as they hear from superintendents and districts? I mean, six weeks for teachers and six weeks for kids. That's a lot.
Well, I agree. And it's our understanding, in fact, Dr. Decker and Dr. Eslinger. I agree. And it's our understanding, in fact, Dr. Decker and Dr. Esslinger, listen, I, I've been asking them the last couple of weeks to sit in on these one o'clock calls with the commissioner because there's, there are a lot, there's a lot of information that's being disseminated and some of it, they're taking questions. We believe, based on conversations we had last week and this week, that there will be waiver process for school districts to apply, and that there will be some flexibility. I was about to say significant flexibility, but let me just say some flexibility, we believe, in how these summer camps are set up, how they're implemented and just, and, and we certainly appreciate that because every district is different. And what, what is no one-size-fits-all. And we believe that if given the flexibility, we can design and implement a successful program for our students.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. That's good to hear.
Okay, next, I've no other questions. Accountability, which you, as a board, passed a Hold Harmless proclamation several months back. We appreciate that, and I think it's what's helped to be, push this legislation through. That will hold harmless from both a school-level accountability, the ratings, student growth composites, our alternative growth model evaluations for teachers, and also in non-tested grades, and also subjects in kindergarten, their portfolio and the portfolio alternative. So we are very appreciative of that. The one thing that, that you have to meet as a school district is you have to have, to be held harmless, you have to have 80% of your students to take the TCAP assessment. We believe we can be successful in that. We have about 15%, as you know, of our students who are in virtual learning. We are certainly going to invite, and we hope parents will feel comfortable with sending those students who are in virtual learning to school to take the assessment. But even, even if we have, if some parents do not, we still think that we can meet that threshold and will be able to have that hold harmless as far as accountability in the district. So I'll entertain questions. Or Dr. Decker, Dr. Esslinger, if you have anything to add. No questions? Okay, the last piece, the literacy, and Dr. Decker, I'm going to turn that over to you since it concerns a lot of professional learning and some of the things, quite frankly, that we believe we've been doing a really good job in, that we can always improve. But Dr. Decker?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The Tennessee Literacy Success Act outlines new expectations for how schools and districts will measure and report on efforts to improve literacy rates and new measures to ensure that teachers are prepared and supported to deliver instruction grounded in foundational literacy skills. And as Dr. Snowden said, this language references that these are new actions, but we believe that these have been in place in Franklin Special for quite a while. The act requires school districts to develop a foundational literacy skills plan to articulate locally-driven solutions to improve literacy outcomes for students. These plans will be submitted to the Tennessee Department of Education for approval and reported publicly to provide transparency. That foundational literacy skills plan is due by June 1st, 2021. At this point, the district will be expected to resubmit or edit that plan every three years. School districts will also begin to administer a universal reading screener to all students in K through third grades three times each year to identify students with a significant reading deficiency and to measure literacy rates across schools. This is something that we already have in place. You're probably aware, in grades K through two, we have Ames Web. Grades two through four and five through eight, we have STAR, is our universal screeners that we administer three times a year. At this point, the act states that we will be able to continue, continue to use those screeners that we already have in place.
Any questions?
Oh, sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry.
That's, those are the highlights. I think the, the last piece that I would add is that there is professional learning as part of this legislation, as Dr. Snowden mentioned. Current teachers in grades K through five must complete at least one professional development course on foundational literacy skills approved by the TDOE in order to advance or renew their teaching license.
Any questions related to the literacy bill? The General Assembly had a two-week break after that legislation, special legislation, legislative session. They're back in session this week. We do anticipate other educational legislation to be passed. It's our understanding that the governor has proposed a 4% salary increase for certified educators for next year's budget. Again, we'll see if that passes through both houses. And there will be some other, and we'll try to keep you apprised of any educational legislation as it, as it develops. Other questions? Moving on to update of monitoring of COVID-19 data spread. And even though we've seen an increase over the past three weeks for active cases and active quarantines, the evidence still indicates that the transmission of the virus at schools is extremely low. I know we had the situation where we had to go remote from Papa Grove Middle just because of the number of teachers in quarantine situation as well as students. But overall, we continue to, I think, do remarkably well. And, and quite frankly, we believe it's due to the, the students, the teachers, the staff, parents, in following our mitigation protocol. And I know mask has been, the use of masks has been controversial. However, we really believe that and the other mitigation protocols that we have in place are helping us to keep our students in person at school. And we just ask and, and hope that people will continue and not let, let our guard down for certain as we go through the next several months. We know that there'll be, there'll continue to be situations that call for quarantines of individuals and possibly classes or entire grade levels, which we just, or entire school, which we just saw. Our goal is to be able to address these situations so that the smallest number of students and teachers possible are excluded so that our in-person learning can continue. There's no additional information on when our FSSD employees will be able to receive the vaccine. We did send Suzanne to send out a survey, a sign-up opportunity this morning for our employees, and that includes all of our FSSD employees, our interim and our student teachers, our substitutes, and also our Young Scholar Institute instructors. We really would like to have young scholars be returned this summer. We felt like one way to do that or to help do that, make that possible, would be to provide opportunities for those community members who teach in Young Scholars, but yet are not our employees on an annual basis, to have the vaccines. And so we were able to to get that accomplished. So as soon as the vaccines come in, then we'll have those two Saturdays scheduled, one, one Saturday for the first dose, another Saturday for the second dose. As of 6:00 this evening, I looked and we had 386 of our employees since this morning, and I guess probably they received the email, I'm guessing about 10:00 or so. So we've already had 386 at 6:00. I haven't checked back lately since 6:00. So we think that's a good turnout. We, we did have a short turnaround that we gave them. We're asking them to be, complete that process this Wednesday. Questions about anything COVID-related? Okay, hearing none. The JA Career Quest 2021, that was held, as mentioned earlier, virtually on January 28th for all FSSD and WCS eighth graders. They had a chance to visit the conference and explore the many opportunities that may be available, available to them. We certainly appreciate the work of Dr. Kirk Patrick, Ms. Duke, and Ms. Gentry, and many others who helped create this different, but very positive experience for our students. Our Food and Culinary Services Department, formerly known as our Child Nutrition Department, have got a new name and a new logo. Along with this comes an updated department vision to serve every student, a fresh, colorful, well-balanced, quality meal every day in a safe, positive, and welcoming environment. We share the department's excitement as they continue to make positive changes to this significant provo. Robin and her folks have done a great job during COVID, last year during the extended closure, and again, with this, with this grant money. So we're excited that, as we continue to look to improve our meal service for our students and our employees. The district will be closed February 15th in observance of the President's Day holiday. Also, this is African-American History Month, February, and our schools will be recognizing the contributions of many outstanding African-Americans, men and women. There is time during the month. I know our board members had an opportunity to read at FES last week. So this year, the scholarship and community recognition will be awarded for the Monroe and Mary Booker Awards for Leadership and Service. It'll be done virtually. There'll be no in-person ceremony due to the pandemic. We congratulate, congratulate the recipients and thank the Booker family for their service to our community. Teacher, Principal, and Supervisor of the Year, Building Teachers, District Level Teachers, Principal of the Year, and Supervisor of the Year have been selected. All of these individuals will be honored at the March Board Meeting with a reception preceding the meeting, if possible, to have gatherings then. We'd like to congratulate all. We're very proud of, to have them leading and educating our students and serving as great examples of the education profession within our schools and the district. This year, our Principal of the Year is Dr. Joel Hoag from Freedom Intermediate. And our Supervisor of the Year is with us tonight, Dr. Mary Decker. So we're very proud of those individuals as well as the Teachers of the Year throughout the district and the district teachers of the year. And then you have the conference and meeting, conference and meetings update. And that's all I have. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Any questions for Dr. Snowden? Not, Dr. Decker, anything else from you?
Nothing further. Thank you, sir.
All right, Dr. Esslinger?
Well, in your board package, you have our typical HR reports and the, the sales tax report for the month of February indicates a 3.5% increase of the same time period last year, which is always a good thing to be in the positive.
Thank you. For announcements, I have two. First of all, if any board member wants to make a comment about School Board Appreciation Week, I'll give you 30 seconds for each board member and 15 for Kevin, and then we'll move on. But anybody want to make a comment about what they did for, where they went and what happened for a teacher? For, I mean, School Board Appreciation Week, I'll give you that opportunity now.
Robert, I appreciate the 15 minutes you're giving me.
Yes, yes. You're done now.
I have to tell you that School Board Appreciation Week, if everyone knows, that's the week that all the schools fight over the best school board member. Freedom Middle School lost this year. They got me. But I gotta tell you, Adam Demumbrium, a communes, Dr. Farmer, we had a great meeting, great breakfast. They brought in their student, students of the month at all the grades. Excellent conversation with them. I really enjoyed it. It's cool. It was great to hear the kids' views on what makes their school so special. And the number one answer were the teachers. That's my, I'll reserve the rest of my 15 minutes for more discussion later.
Anyone else? Robert?
Okay, I went to Liberty and it was, it was such a treat. It was really the highlight of my day. It was the 100th day of school, so I got to see all the littles dressed up as old people. And the one was talking about how when she got old, she was going to have wrinkles, and so she was drawing a picture which I wouldn't know about, but they were so welcoming. It was a great environment. It was so fun to see the construction, all the good stuff happening at Liberty.
Dale, anyone else?
I'd like to share. I had the privilege of going to Johnson Elementary, and for those of you, you probably know, my kids went through Johnson Elementary. And first of all, I just, I mean, you go into that library and you just, you can't help but just be mesmerized by all of the beauty within. The kids gave me very hard questions and morning announcements, and it was just a joy to have conversations with the teachers, social distance, and, and just very grateful again to feel appreciated by our schools.
Right.
I'll share. I had a Zoom call with some eighth graders from Papa Grove Middle, which was very fun and entertaining. And one of the things I asked them was how they thought, how they felt about school this year with everything that's been so different and so hard. And two of them shared how much they appreciate that we tried to make school as normal as possible and that they were able to still come to school and see their friends. And, you know, they all said it's definitely been a challenging year, but it was good to, they all seemed positive, you know, about how they were doing with all the things going on with school. Then I got some wonderful cards and lunch from Papa Grove Elementary School. And most of those students asked about my dog, so I think someone must have shown them a picture of my dog. So a lot of questions about bear, but it was really fun. I didn't get to go to either school, but it was great the way they did it. I appreciated it.
Stillings, did you get around anywhere?
Yeah, I did. I had a Zoom call at Intermediate, and it's always a good day to, to speak with students, and I was interviewed on Zoom and, of course, asked the difficult questions. Probably the same ones that they asked Ms. Bell. And it's, it's, it's always a good day.
Yes, it is. I was fortunate to go to Moore Elementary and Franklin Elementary and be interviewed several times. And actually, at Franklin Elementary, got to tour the school and walk around and meet students, my alma mater for elementary. And, but it was a great day. And once again, my highlight is coming back home and getting to read all of those cards and just reading each and every one of them and, and looking at the pictures that they draw of me. Some of them are very accurate, but always, always a great, always a great time. One other announcement, spoke with Dr. Snowden, and due to us not in person attending the NSBA conference in Chicago, we will move the April Board Meeting back to its regular second Monday of April the 12th. So that board meeting, probably on your calendar, says April 19th, but we will move it to April the 12th. Any other announcements? Mr. Townsend?
I just want to say, one, one more thing is that Black History Month, I was lucky enough to read to the kids at, at Franklin Elementary. And, you know, they, again, they give you all these cards to read. Love that. I gotta say one thing, the kid said, "Thank you for all you do. You're the best school director ever." So we actually have that school director. Also, I want to tell Emma Lyon, she asked what my favorite color was. She gave me all these choices in mind. It's red. I gotta say, Elizabeth, if anyone's in trouble for not turning in her report, I think Elizabeth meant to give me her, her, "Thank you for coming out." I have her poison dark frogs report, so I don't want her to be in trouble. She turned it in. I just have it. I gotta say that. I gotta say back to a school, School Board Appreciation Week. I received this from Freedom. I received, they asked me to choose which covering to use. I took all three, sorry. As usual, I get a card that just thanks me for coming out.
Townsend, Miss Townsend is not showing Dale, okay?
Oh, okay, okay. And I gotta say, the last thing is, also for Black History Month, I got to go to Liberty Elementary. And it was, I'm serious, this was incredible. They, they used local people they talked about, of course, woman Rudolph. and was, I'm serious, this was incredible. They, they used local people they talked about, of course, Wilma Rudolph, and then Dr. James Townsley. And I thought, wow, it was incredible they did that. So I just want to say that it was, it's incredible how, again, I know a lot of people they could choose and throw it out there. That's phenomenal. So I really appreciate Liberty Elementary for that. And that's all I have.
Real quickly, Robert, I just wanted to say, junior achievement was phenomenal, being able to see that. The, the Career Quest on, online, thank you so much for allowing us to have access for that. And just super grateful for being able to do this via Zoom. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anything else? If not, consider yourself adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.